Meeting, it's five fifty. Selectmen's meeting, Thursday, May nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen, at five fifty. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll welcome the candidate in. I'll just give him a brief, or she, the, just the timeline of the project.
Okay.
And highlight three of the priorities that are in the DLS report, and then proceed with three initial questions, and then we can jump in and go from there.
Okay.
Do you have one marked off that you really want to ask?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm gonna ask that one John wanted.
Okay. No, that's fine, I just, I saw it marked on your paper. And Jen understands that it's not your intent to make a decision tonight, or?
Yeah, we talked a little bit earlier. And we're not gonna make, we could make a final decision tonight, but we're not gonna announce it, or if we wanted to deliberate further, we can, okay?
Sounds good.
And tentatively, we'll post for a meeting for next week.
Okay.
To finalize. Okay?
Yep.
Ready for first caller?
Is Mr. Slazek here?
Yeah, he's here, so.
Okay, where do I begin?
Yeah, I think we do.
Yeah, that's what I did.
Wow, that's nice. Mr. Slazek, can I address Slazek? This is Jen Nguyen.
Nice meeting you.
Hi, Roland Barrett. Nice to meet you, Mr. Barrett.
Good to meet you.
You?
Thank you.
I was gonna wear a red tie, too.
What's that?
I was gonna wear a red tie. Is that red?
It is red.
It is red.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And our interview will be for forty-five minutes. A final decision probably will not be made tonight, but we'll get back to you after we've finished our deliberation. So, the reason we're here tonight is a report was performed by the Division of Local Services, and the chronology on that was, we received a report on the fifth, the report was issued on the fifth of January. We signed a community compact on the twenty-sixth of January. In early February, we decided to proceed forward in changing the form of government to Town Administrator. And on five nine, Town Meeting approved Town Administrator form of government.
I commend you on that. So many of those reports are just done and ignored. You've moved about as fast as I've ever seen anyone.
Well, it's small, but it looked pretty powerful.
The, in the focal points of their recommendations were, number one, to recommend it to Town Administrator, and to formalize our financial policies, codify them, and capital planning, long-term capital planning, and economic development is another important piece of all of this. And part of that is our Planning Board is in the midst of preparing a master plan for the town. That's basically the background on all of it. We'll share the responsibility of questioning. So, I'll start it off with, have you learned, have you learned anything about Milgo prior to?
I know some about it. I know that economic development is important, and I've looked at your zoning bylaws, and I've got some ideas on that I'd like to discuss if I had the opportunity.
You see, basically, where do you see the assets of a small town like this being? What would they be?
The assets are always the people. The challenges are, it's an old mill town, and reusing the things that are there, there's always good bones, but you've gotta convince people outside. That was a challenge when I was in Oxbridge, I mean, the Burnett Mill, getting someone to reuse that space. They want fresh, clean parcels of land, and those are not always available, particularly in a small town.
What qualities, qualifications do you think are most important for an effective Town Administrator?
I think you need some vision, you need to have some technical skills, you need to really understand the rules, and take advantage of what's out there from the state, and you really, you need a broad breadth of knowledge, and sometimes a depth of knowledge, too. It's an odd job. You're a jack-of-all-trades. There are very few jobs where you have to know finance, you have to know buildings, you have to know labor relations, you have to know law, so you really have to be pretty broadly educated. And I think if you're deficient in one area, you're gonna have problems. You've gotta, you've gotta be very broad spectrum, particularly in a small town, because you can't, you don't have the ability to hire people in to fill the gaps. You know, if you're not, if you're not strong in finance in a town of forty thousand, you can hire a finance director. I don't think you have that in the budget here.
Right. You practiced law for twelve years.
I did.
And then you went into government, municipal government, you did a little bit.
It wasn't really a transition. I was sort of always involved, and I spent a lot of time in government, I just didn't get paid for it. And when the Town Administrator position came up, I decided, you know, why not? And I applied for it, and I was the Town Administrator in Lovell for about five years.
You're presently Town Administrator in Sterling?
Correct.
And you've been there approximately two years?
Yeah, this is my, yeah, approximately two years, I'm going on two years.
I did note that, it appeared that when you moved after two years in a couple situations...
I did. In Oxbridge, frankly, it was a change in the board, I wasn't renewed. I was perceived, I think wrongly, as being an opponent of the new high school there. I was not. But I was hired by a board that was not in favor of the high school, and I think I was perceived as their creature, they wanted their own person when the board changed. And that's why I left. I would've been very happy staying in Oxbridge to this day. I was in Athol, and I really liked that town, I liked that people. It's a very poor town, but there was an opportunity to really make a difference there. The problem there was a, for me, was that they have a residency requirement. I believe I fulfilled the residency requirement. I fulfilled it in the same way my predecessor had, which was by renting a home in town and staying there during the week. My family continued to live in our home in Ludlow. The members of the board felt that I shouldn't split my time, and I should live only in Athol, including the weekends, and that was not something my wife was prepared to do. At the time, she was working in Holyoke, which would've been a horrible commute from Athol. She was working there till last week, when she lost her job.
You have a bit of a hike now to Sterling?
Yeah, I do.
Probably three hours a day on the road?
Oh, two and a half.
Two and a half.
Approximately.
Would be about the same here?
About the same. It was about the same as Oxbridge. We are, Town Administrators and Town Managers as a group tend to travel. It's not, I'm probably a little farther than most, but certainly I've heard of people with longer commutes than that. And frankly, plenty of people here commute into the city, which is a commute I wouldn't want to do. You do that?
I commute two to three hours a day.
Yeah.
Some, every direction.
Well, coming from Western Mass is not bad, it's not a bad ride, it's, the traffic moves and...
Yeah, you're going against the...
Yeah.
Your long-term goal and objectives for your personal life?
I'm fifty-two, I don't know if I have long, well... I mean, I would, I would like to find a place to finish up my career from ten, ten or twelve years, and my wife wants one day to move to a warmer climate.
Probably, huh?
And I'll, wherever she's going, I'm following her.
Yeah.
So, during your professional career, when you reached a difficult situation, how did you handle it?
Frankly, and I can't get into too many specifics...
I understand that.
I had a difficult situation last week. We had a, an employee, a ten-year employee that the Board of Selectmen was not happy with, a department head, and they had the intent to bring, and possibly bring her in, discipline her, and I didn't see it going in a good way. I talked to them, I talked to her, and I arranged for a separation agreement with a little bit of severance. It allowed her to leave with some dignity and protected the town from possible lawsuit. I always look for the best way to get out of a bad situation, that it's not a matter of winning, it's trying to get both parties where they need to be and get a resolution that they can live with. I had a situation when I was in Oxbridge with a police officer, similarly. She was not someone that we were gonna be able to retain because of some issues, and we, we made it work for, with a retirement. So, when there are difficult personnel situations, I always try and protect the town and allow the, try and get the employee to leave with some dignity. I don't know if that's, I immediately go to personnel when you say a difficult situation, because frankly, those are the worst situations, when you've got people and their lives in a bad situation, employment situations, those are really the most heart-wrenching things. Other things are, you know, it's just stuff.
Thank you.
I'm gonna switch gears a little bit. Our Finance Committee Chair, you guys have to have a strategic plan for the town, and I agree with him.
Mm-hmm.
So, can you share with us, from a past professional experience, the involvement of a strategic plan in which you participated in, what your contribution was, and the outcome?
Well, in the past year, we've been looking with the Finance and Capital Committee not to, to change our whole warrant process, because what we've been doing is simply putting stuff on the warrant, and Town Meeting's been voting for it. This year, we've changed that all around with a unitary capital plan. So, instead of talking individually, do we want this, do we want that, let's have the plan, let's see how much money we have to spend, let's see what we're gonna pare it down to. In other words, look at what we're spending for capital as a whole, not individually. Went better at Town Meeting, too. We came up, we had about eight hundred thousand in original capital requests, we pared it down to about four. It passed with virtually no debate, and we funded it all with free cash. And because of that, we really held the tax rate down this year. It will probably go up less than two percent, which is below, below inflation, really, certainly below government inflation.
I'm not all that familiar with Sterling. What percentage of your total town budget is allocated to education?
About sixty, plus the Chapter Seventy that goes directly to the regional school. It's about sixty percent. It's fairly typical. Yeah. You'll find that's pretty typical everywhere. Although, frankly, in Athol, it was much lower, but that's because historically, the states picked up a large percentage of the budget, because they're, they're very poor. But typically, sixty percent is the number you'll see in most towns.
All right. I assume you read the DLS report?
I did.
What priorities would you recommend addressing initially prioritizing?
I should've reread it today. I read it a little while back. Do you mind if I, I take a look at... You've done that. Well, codifying the budget process is pretty easy to do. I mean, you start with a budget calendar, and certainly that would be a pretty easy one to do, and that's something that I have worked on in Sterling, getting a budget calendar that works and starts early. We've moved it back up from last year, and, you know, it sort of went, you hit the benchmarks, and it's, it runs itself, you're kind of done, one after another, and the warrant goes out and goes to the publisher, and you sort of sit back and wait for Town Meeting. So, it really is helpful to codify the budget process and get the, get the calendar in place, because then you've got something that, a process that runs itself. It was hectic last year, because I went into a process that was undefined, and because I had gone in, and my predecessor had passed, it was kind of in disarray. So, I didn't want that ever to happen again. I'd always had a good, a good process in place, and never, I was never a crammer in college. I was always the guy that was up with his, reading and up with his studies, so I wasn't cramming at the end, and I'm not comfortable doing that sort of thing for Town Meeting, so I would tackle that first. I see a formal financial, you've been asked to do formal financial policies, I'm very surprised your auditor hasn't made you do that in the past. Who's your auditor, by the way?
Who's our auditor? Bron?
Bron.
Bron Amenden? Yeah, Bron.
I don't know, I don't know them. I mean, that's vital to have, just for auditing purposes. If you're gonna be doing any bonding, Moody's asks, you're gonna be required to tell them and under pains and penalties of perjury, that you have those financial policies in place. Again, it's an easy thing to do. You find some good ones, lift them. It's very simple, I probably would just call the accountant in the town I'm working in and get a copy of them, and review them, and adopt them. If they work in one place, they work in another.
How long would it take you to get that process out?
Not long. I mean, financial policies are pretty standard. I mean, they do need some tailoring, the exact, the exact thresholds and such, but the structure is the same everywhere. Policies on turnovers, things like that, pretty easy to put into place, you just take them from a place that has good policies. Unlike the, unlike the world at large, town documents aren't copyrighted, so it's okay to take them from one to another.
Yeah, right.
You probably took the Town Administrator job description from another community and...
Oh, we did, with a few different ones and mixed and matched.
Yeah, and that's what everybody does. Capital planning is always difficult, because it's, to really get a capital plan and implement it, it takes money. These other things don't really require any cash to do. You can put processes in place, you can put policies in place. I've found in the past, to really have a long-term capital plan, people have capital needs, they call them capital plans, they put them forward and say, we need this, and this, and this, and this, and this. Well, that's half a plan, the other half is paying for it. And you've really gotta grow into that. I've found that if you don't have adequate capital funding, you start building, you dedicate some portion of your new revenues permanently to capital. It's just the way, I guess, if you are working in a place with a 401K and they do a match or something, you know, you get a two percent raise or a three percent raise, you put one, one percent more that year into the, into your 401K. Well, the town can do the same thing. Put that money away towards capital and start funding that plan. And you want to get up to five or six percent a year of your total revenues towards capital, and that's a good long-term number for most places. I mean, if you're woefully behind in your capital, you may have to bring it up to more, but five or six percent is, four to, four to six, four, five, six, depending on the needs, is usually adequate. Some towns I've seen, for example, when I was in Athol, Orange, I'd just let everything go, and that was never gonna bring them up. Their fire trucks were falling apart, their ambulances were not in good shape, they needed to put more into capital, and they didn't have that ability, but five percent wouldn't have done it for them. But most places, it's a good number.
That would be a policy piece in the financial...
Yes, in a capital plan, a funding mechanism. Some places make it a policy to dedicate free cash, or most of their free cash, to capital. I'm not really crazy about that, because it's, it changes from year to year, and that's, that's not, that's not a proper way to fund it, in my experience. A plan is not, a plan should have some, some ability to forecast into the future, and free cash is not something you can forecast every year.
Right. Your thoughts on stabilization?
Much as possible. I think it's a good policy if, to put as much into stabilization, and each year, we put all of our free cash in stabilization, and then spend it out of there. And that leaves it there, whatever you're done with, when you spend it on other things at Town Meeting, it builds it. And you try never to, to make it go down unless there's a real reason, that's your bank account.
Yeah.
I mean, sometimes, bad things happen.
Yeah.
That's what stabilization is there for. I had a case one, one time where we had to have a special Town Meeting, this was in Ludlow. A whole neighborhood had become submerged in water, because the, we had changes in the way the town, the, this was a low point in the town. It was a nineteen-fifties neighborhood, called Electric Park, all-electric back then, it was the newest thing. And they put lines in that were eighteen-inch, and they were more than adequate when the town was mostly undeveloped. And years and years of development had taken all those trees away, so now more and more water was draining, and we got one heavy storm, and it just overwhelmed this whole system, and there was eighteen inches of water in the streets. We had a special Town Meeting, and we took quite a bit of money out of stabilization, and up the size of the lines to thirty-six inches. We had to do it. That's an emergency. That's something that, if we didn't have it, we would've gone, had to go through the process of bonding, it just, it would've taken much longer. It's really nice to have money in the bank, whether you're an individual or you're a town.
What about master planning? Roland, one of our selectmen is not here, but he had a question.
So, we have, the, in the DLS report, they, you know, they want us to have a master plan. It's presently, they have the draft made, I'm waiting for a few more items to finish it up, put it to bed, and implement it. What's your thoughts on speeding up that and giving them help and direction on that?
I will say, it's, it's good to have a master plan if you plan to use it. I've seen too many master plans created, everybody says this is nice, it's put on a shelf, and it's never really followed. Currently, in Sterling, there's a move externally to create a master plan. The Planning Board doesn't want it, and I'm not in favor until they ask for it. Because if you have a master plan, and the Planning Board is not going to use it and implement it and work with it, then you shouldn't spend the money on it. It's sort of like buying a bulldozer for the DPW when they tell you, we don't need it, and we're not gonna use it. So, I would really need to know that you've got a Planning Board that is going to make use of a master plan before I would advocate spending the money, because they're not cheap.
The master, I do know the Planning Board is pretty energetic and wants to make it happen, but...
Well, it's a tool for them.
Yeah.
And if they're gonna use it, then they should be given that tool.
One main piece that they needed was to rezone, which we did, so that helped. Because we were completely bedroom community before.
Oh, okay.
So, last, is it only a year ago? Year, year and a half ago, we rezoned, so there are commercial zones in the town now, so you don't need a special license to have a hot dog stand now.
Well, you kind of do in most places. I looked at your, your table of uses, and there are very few commercial uses you can't do without a special permit. And unfortunately nowadays, if you have people looking at your town to come in, they're afraid of special permits.
Exactly.
And they're there, I mean, there's, a lot of the uses are SP, they're not by right usage. And if you're in competition with another community for a business, and that business knows they can go into the other community and do that by right, and here, they've gotta go before the Planning Board, now they're gonna buy the land, they're gonna do all of that development, they're gonna go before the Planning Board, and if they get turned down, they're all done.
Right.
That's a big risk.
Right.
So, I would urge you, whether with me or with someone else that you hire, to look at your, your table of uses, and look at the special permit requirements, and make sure you need them. You know, you kind of think, well, we'd like to, we'd like to have the opportunity to look at that, and make sure you're, you're not doing something we don't want you to do. But the fact is, when these people come in, they look at your, they look at your zoning laws before they even come to the town. And if they see things that they see are going to be a problem, they don't even approach you.
Right.
Because, let's, let's be honest, you're in competition with other communities... Because, let's be honest, you're in competition with other communities for businesses. They want to go to places that have the labor force, places that have the infrastructure, water and sewer, but they also want a regulatory atmosphere that they can live with. And you want to make it as easy as possible. I would recommend that you figure out where you want the commercial development, and then look at 43D expedited permitting for those districts, the preferred development areas. That's really the key, to have by-right zoning and expedited permit. So, people know that if they're going to come into the town, they're going to be up and running pretty quickly and not bogged down in permitting for two years.
We do have, have as a right for solar, expedited permitting as well.
For solar. Solar, unfortunately, doesn't create any jobs.
When I built my house 26 years ago, we had two stores, right, a deli and a liquor store right downtown. We have a restaurant now, which was there then, a bar restaurant. And now, you go downtown, and they're not there. And, you know, we need to bring stuff like that back. And if, I think it was three or four years ago, Alan, was it on Main Street, we tried to have an auction on a piece of property. Guess who showed up to the auction? Nobody, except the auctioneer showed. At least he showed.
Well...
You know, so, because, and it's because, at that time, we were strictly bedroom. But, you know, looking at people that are interested in Main Street properties, they look at our zoning, they look at our bylaws, and they say, "We're not going. That's what we want to get away from. We want to make Millville interesting for business."
Yeah, you want it to be viable.
I mean, we don't have water and sewer, and it is what it is, but we want to make every other angle for them to, want to ignore the water and sewer. Give them something enticing enough so that they'll ignore the water and sewer issue, you know?
Have you talked about getting either water and/or sewer from Oxbridge? I mean, that's, in my town of Ludlow, we don't have wells, and we don't have a sewer plant. The water comes in from Springfield, and we pay a fee to the city of Springfield for it. And when we're done, well, it goes back to Springfield, let me put it that way.
Right.
And it goes to the Bondy's Island Plant. And that's true of a number of towns surrounding the city of Springfield. They've got a huge waterworks, and they've got a huge sewer plant. I mean, enormous. There's nothing wrong with that. It doesn't make economic sense for a very small town to build a sewer plant. And Oxbridge is developing more water. The Nosson Wells will be coming out, I would think, pretty soon. We were working on those things five years ago, so I assume that that's continued, if they're not online yet. I haven't followed since I left there, but, you know, I know that that process was going along.
There's been times in the past, I know in the late 90s, when I served on the board previously, we had a meeting with Oxbridge in regards to sewer and coming in, because there were some issues. But nothing, you know, came to fruition with that. And I think the money scares people, and the increased tax rate would scare people. So, you know, it doesn't go beyond those initial talking points. So, I mean, that's something, I think every, it kind of ebbs and flows. Like, it always comes up, there's some talks, but then it goes away. So, there wasn't, hasn't been follow-through or commitment to invest in something like that.
Well, even if you do bring the services in for business areas, it's possible to use creative financing. Let me give you an example. In Athol, which is a town, it's poor as a church mouse. If you go up on Route 2, and I'm sure you don't get up to Route 2 very often, you'll see that there's a new market basket there, and there's a new development.
Saw that.
What's that?
I saw that.
And it's beautiful. I mean, Market Basket's a great store. And there was really nothing there. There wasn't a decent place to shop. And there's going to be more retail there. There's eventually going to be a hotel. There's going to be some nice stores. It's going to be somewhat similar to the project that's up on 146 near Pike.
Yep.
When it's fully completed. But there was no water there. And the project was not going to go anywhere until we got water there. And we didn't have the money. It was $3 million, which is, might as well be $3 billion with Athol, with what their budget was. We tried to get the money from the state with the former, with the Patrick administration, and it wasn't forthcoming. So, we used district improvement financing. We had a, we defined the district, and then we went out and bonded to bring the water in, using our anticipated increased revenues from the project. In other words, what we'd done is leveraged our future tax revenues from the project, future marginal tax revenues from the project. You know, we saw, we estimated what, when things were going to come online, what our new revenues would be from that project. And then we marketed that as the financing to bring the water lines in. So, when we were done, you know, the project was there, the jobs were there. Now, we weren't going to see the new tax revenues for, I think it was 10 years, because they had been dedicated to paying for the infrastructure. But if we hadn't done it, they would never be coming. So, you can look for that sort of financing. And it worked very well there. I'm not a big TIF fan. I think, you know what TIFs are? That's where you sort of bribe people to come in by giving them reduced taxes for a while. I think Oxbridge did very poorly with the BJ's Warehouse. They lost 25 years of tax revenue on that, and it didn't produce any jobs. I think there's maybe four or five people that work there. Distribution plants don't use a lot of staff.
Finally, Roland, you have another question?
I do. So, I have two that kind of came up as we were here. I'll do partnerships. We have a regional school system.
Mm-hmm.
And we have a Volk School, who's a regional system. So, my question would be is...
You're in Blackstone, I assume.
Yeah, Blackstone Middle Regional High School.
They're expensive.
And Blackstone Valley Tech. So, my question is, you know, how do you, have you had the experience of working with regional or partnerships with other committees and groups?
Yes. Currently, I mean, I've worked with two regional school systems. Very different in configuration. Athol-Royalston is pretty much, has a regional structure, but it's Athol and Royalston, two of those two towns. And Athol's 10 times the size of Royalston, so it's mostly Athol. So, they drive the bus. Wachusett Regional is the opposite. It's the largest regional school system in Massachusetts. It's five towns. It's been tough with Wachusett Regional because when the district was formed, they were five rather similar towns. But over time, they've become terribly dissimilar. Sterling and Holden are wealthy towns. Paxton, Princeton, well, Paxton and Rutland particularly have money problems. So, every year, they come up with a budget, they give us all an assessment, and we pass it. And two of the towns don't. And there's five or six months of wrangling, and eventually, we get a lower assessment. It's created some frustration because the people in town are actually, they want the, they want to pay more because, you know, frankly, the per student spending is very low because it's held down by some of the towns. Sterling is, Sterling can afford it, and they're willing to do it.
Right.
Sometimes I think they have too much money.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I...
I didn't want it such a thing.
That's too much money.
Well, you know, I kind of pride myself in being tight with a dollar, and it's not always appreciated there.
Another question?
Yeah. Currently, we are a small town, and I'm not, you know, you've been in various communities. But with this, there is, you know, an assistant to the town administrator. So, my question is, is the type of support system that you would need around you, whether department heads or assistants, what would be, you know, what, bringing your skill set in, what type of support and things do you need around you?
You know, I, did you say there's no assistant for that?
There is.
I mean, I've never had, I had a lot of assistants in Ludlow, probably too many. But since then, I've had one. So, that's fine. I had three in Ludlow, but that was probably too many. But it's tough to cut. That was a very overstaffed town hall, in my opinion. We had, but efforts to trim it were, for example, we didn't have a treasure collector, we had a treasure and a collector. And it still is that way. Efforts to combine departments to downsize were not appreciated. I like to run a lean staff. I put a lot of trust in my department heads. I'm not a micromanager. I view myself as a resource for the departments. I want to know what you're doing. I like to be kept informed. Don't keep me in the dark. But I'm not going to be down every day checking up on you. That said, sometimes you have problems, and you have to intervene. But that's another part of being a resource for that manager. Unfortunately, as I said last week, we had one that didn't make that transition. So, that was an unfortunate time. But for the most part, I've had really good department heads.
Currently, right now, we're working on getting some financial aid from the state of $800,000 for our town hall, which is crumbling as we speak. What could you help the town of Millville, how could you help the town of Millville with our state representative senator and work with the governor on pursuing, making sure that we do receive that money?
Well, Kevin's a friend of mine, so I certainly could call him. I mean, he's actually more faithful friend with my wife now. But I've known Kevin since before he was in the legislature, so I would not hesitate to call him and bend his ear at any time.
Okay.
Ryan, I know, not as well.
Okay.
But I certainly know Ryan. Again, I knew him before he got in. So, I'm not shy about making those calls.
Well, that's a good, that's good. I'm sure you've checked the town halls. We have another report about the town hall, which is...
I haven't seen that.
We're getting ready to, well, the engineers this winter said, "Listen, you need to not think about moving." You know, not when, or if, it's when.
Yeah.
The if is gone, it's now when you move, which sooner than later is probably the better idea.
Yeah, it's really, it's a problem when that happens. It can be very disconcerting. That happened to a good friend of mine in West Boylston, Leanne Dahmon. He's now the administrator in Sterbridge. The building inspector came in and said, "Everybody out now." And what do you do? All your records are there, all your computers are there. He ended up renting warehouse space for several years until they could get the money together. They bought a property and rehabbed it for new town offices. But, you know, it's embarrassing to be in that sort of situation. And it's not unique. It's happened in Brimfield. Their town hall was condemned, and they repaired it, but it was, people were literally thrown out of it. And Templeton also was in industrial space for a while. So, you don't want that to happen. You want to jump on it and not be in ridiculous circumstances. It's embarrassing. It's, and when you're trying to market the town, when you're trying to get people to come in and create businesses in your town, to have them go down and get a permit and say, "What the heck is this? Do these people know what they're doing?" You don't want that to happen. You want to move this process along and not be pushed into temporary quarters.
You have 45 minutes.
I'm up.
You're up.
I'm up. I'm sorry.
Still got a few.
I do have a final question, in that, should you be the successful candidate, we'd like to hear from you what initial support you would need or expect from the town in your introduction and orientation.
Well, I would want to meet all the department heads, and I don't know how much support I would need. I've done, this is one thing that I've done before. I was the town administrator in Ludlow, but I was also the first town administrator in Ludlow after they went from an executive secretary position. So, I know what it's like to have to sort of carve out the position. Now, there, I had been an attorney in town, and I was part of town government. But when you take over that position and it hasn't existed before, you really have to create it. You have to define it. And that's something I would look forward to doing, but it's something that's not the easiest thing in the world to do because people are used to not having that role filled. And department heads are used to having, you know, a part-time board as their immediate bosses. You have to make them learn that the position has value, that it is a resource. It's, in a sense, they now have someone who is an immediate supervisor, but they also have something to go to when there's a problem. Because, you know, the board of selectmen, you can't act alone, obviously. You're a committee. So, when there's a problem, department heads tend to be somewhat on their own. Having an administrator there is helpful, and it's, you can teach them that this is a resource. This isn't a bad thing. This is a good thing. I've got some, somebody's got my back.
So, we think initially, we'd want to develop an organization chart for the town administrator, town of government, type of government.
Well, that's typically, typically you, town administrator under it, and various elected boards to the side. Elected boards are elected boards, and they're always going to have their independence.
No others?
Yeah.
Do you have any pressing questions for us?
I asked a lot of questions to the, or a number of questions to the committee, and I think the search committee answered the questions I had.
Oh, good.
So, nothing that really comes to mind right now. I hope you'll give me consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I'll leave the water for the next time. Or, girl, I don't know who else you're talking to. Thank you very much. It was very nice to meet you.
Thank you. It's good to meet you.
Good to meet you.
Is that 7 o'clock here? Why kick this around a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, you can.
We're certainly knowledgeable.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Credentials appear to be in order, don't they, according to background?
Yep.
Yep.
Doesn't, doesn't seem too nervous about encountering any potholes. Kind of knows his way around them. And then, not only to go around them, but to... Kind of knows his way around them, and then not only does he go around them, but to fill them in.
Yeah, there was...
It's a good analogy.
Yep.
Yeah, I, you know, it took him a little bit to loosen up, which I'm sure anybody, you know, setting of this thought. But, you know, I've got, within my notes, that, you know, there's definitely a level of competency to...
Yeah.
To do it, I mean, he's got some of the, you know, beginnings, you can hear the beginnings parts of plans and thoughts and ideas.
Yep.
It's hard to say, oh, I would definitely do this, because you don't want to say that, because you want to be open-minded and come in using my own little kind of rubric of thoughts, you know. I mean, he, he's, he did well, I thought.
I, I think so. I like the fact that he, he likes to, he likes the small towns with not much money, he likes to make stuff, stuff happen in a positive way. Sounds like a, a challenge that he enjoys.
Right.
You know? Which is what we're looking for, somebody that's going to...
I mean, I think to...
Take the bow by the horns and go.
He gets a small town, I mean, he said even with the organization flow chart, that you have your elected officials who's kind of out there on their own.
Yeah, he understands it.
We understand that part, the regional, working within a regional district. And even going through similar things that, that's going on here, with, you know, three voting and two not voting, and having to go back. So, it sounds like these are situations that would not be new to him, so...
I only have one concern, is the way he's moved. He's not staying, staying with the towns full term in, in at least a couple of positions. Like, I understand he had rationale for that, or response to that.
Yep.
And the other concern I had would be the commute.
Yep.
It's sixty miles door to door.
Yep.
And if he want, you know, if he'd be up to doing that continually, or when he, if he got a job offer closer.
Yep. I like the fact that he's an attorney, and that...
That's a plus.
And I, you know, that, that would save a lot of hundred ninety-dollar phone calls.
You read his mail?
Hmm?
I said you must have read your mail.
Oh, yeah, why? That's in my mail?
Because that, they just increased the rate.
Oh.
It wasn't that until, will be that July.
Oh, okay. I was just rounding up.
Oh.
So, it's a reality, huh?
I thought they were going to hold it.
Actually, it's one eighty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were one ninety.
Yeah.
We talked them down to one eighty.
Yeah.
And now they're bumping it up to one eighty-five.
Oh, no, I did read that from the other night, you sent that letter.
Yes.
Yes. That's where I did get it. So, anyway, yeah, I mean, every time you save a hundred ninety dollars adds up quick, and stuff like that. Anyway, as far as the travel thing goes, that doesn't concern me.
No.
I do it every day, two hundred miles, three hundred miles, doesn't matter to me, I do it every day.
No, I mean...
So, some people enjoy it, some people...
If you're in a place that you, you like, and you're, you know, it's a good fit, then you do it. I mean, I was working in Braintree, traveling through that...
And that's a horrible commute.
Yeah, it was, it was cake.
Well, because of the traffic.
Yeah, the traffic is really, so, but, I got an offer in Milford, and I was like, there's no way I'm driving through Milford. And I stayed in Braintree, because I can't do Milford traffic. I'd rather be on the highway and zooming through, so it's all, and, and it's, if it's a good fit, and you like your job, it's, you kind of get over that commute piece of it.
Yep.
It's just making sure it's that right fit. So... He definitely had some thoughts about capital funding. Could hear the starts of plans there.
Yeah. I think he wants to prioritize all the different...
Right.
And, and he's right, it takes money.
Yeah.
You can have a whole list of capital items, but how do you fund them? That's, that's the important, that's the hard part.
And his, his talking about future reimbursement and financing on that project in Ludlow with the water issue. You could definitely, you know, you could, you could hear it in there, like, he's got that stuff, he's got that stuff down.
Yep.
For the next interview, same, same protocol?
Yep.
Do you want anything different?
I just want to make sure I add in the regional, that question that I had asked. And we talked about the support, so make sure we add those in on the next one, because I think that's, gives us a little insight to another aspect of the job.
I just think I'm fine.
Oh, that's okay.
How are you? How are you doing? Nice to see you. Minus one tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, everybody, I'm going back to you.
I didn't want my pin.
I did, because I think it's a wonderful thing, and your parade was spectacular.
Welcome, and it's good to see you.
Thank you.
The reason we're, we're meeting tonight is basically the result of the DLS recommendations and the report that we received in January. We're moving right along. Our goal is to implement the recommendations of that report. And the key pieces, number one piece was to change the form of government, government to town administrator. And then get your act together in terms of financial management practices, and codify the financial procedure. Capital planning, another key element. And the final concern is going forward, economic development for the town.
Okay.
So, I, you've probably memorized the report. And, you know, you've been a friend to Millville for a long time. What, what's, what's attracting you to this job?
There's a number of things. First of all, thank you for doing your due diligence in this process. One of the perhaps overarching reasons why I wanted to actually apply for this position is, first and foremost, because I really, really consider this community to be truly the heart of the Commonwealth. When I represented it for over eight years, and being somebody who was born and raised in the Blackstone Valley, in a small mill village, Wilkinsonville, it just mirrored my upbringing. And I've not only felt that as somebody who actually worked with this community, but embraced the people. Aside from feeling very connected to the people of this community, which I feel very connected to them. I think that's important, no matter what position you hold in life. I'm at a position in my life, after having suffered several significant losses to terminal illness. And I just revamped what I wanted to do for the next ten years of my life. And I've always felt strongly connected to people, and wanting to help solve very complex problems at the local level. And I feel I have an awful lot to offer based on all of my experiences, Mr. Chairman. And I, and I feel that this community has taken some really bold steps in creating, I think, the permanency of this position. You had an overwhelming vote recently. It shows me that the community understands that change is inevitable, and is embracing that, and knows that the road ahead is one in which you're hoping to set the bar very high. And I've always been known for doing firsts, being a first person as a woman to represent this area, being first as somebody who has started many different organizations that have benefited the community, even this community, and somebody who has really understood the value of leadership. So, I understand what you're trying to do, and I think I can be helpful that way. And I feel very connected to many of the people who work in this town. And I started a lot of projects many years ago, some of which came to fruition, and some of which I would love to continue to work with you and bring to the next stage.
One of the initial pieces in moving forward is pursuing DLS grant money from the Community Compact. In the first piece is the financial policies and codifying. And I would like to hear your thoughts on the process of getting that all together. In your mind, how, how we would accomplish that, and how soon we could accomplish that?
Well, I think one of the first things as a town administrator, looking at how important of, of an emphasis you've placed on that particular report, and rightfully so. I mean, there are many things in that report that are just what we consider to be basic, good business. And, you know, in absence of having the opportunity to perhaps have codified this position with that authority, it perhaps has been more nebulous than other communities, no fault to the previous and fine work of your executive secretary, who I actually worked with for many years, and had a, a very strong working relationship. But however, I understand that if going forward, that is an important document. It's a blueprint, it's a checklist. One of the first things I would do with this board is find out where you are in the process. Now, I have read the report. I've also been watching what you've done as a community already, in response to certain aspects of that report, even in your most recent town meeting, where you've addressed the issues for revolving accounts. You've been looking at other areas that are important to, to note and take care of. I know you've been working on the technology side. Where you are at for every one of those things, I would not know until I was in the position. So, one of the things that you might not even know is where you are at with all of those things. Even in two thousand and ten, you had a report from, you know, in terms of the assessments, and, you know, there were fourteen somewhat recommendations that they felt had not been fulfilled yet. So, I think one of the first things you do is you make sure that you're following those kinds of things. I was a project management person many years, long before I went into local and state government, and I worked with executive leaders for the largest central Massachusetts employer. And my job was to actually keep track of things, to move large-scale projects, to work with financial analysts, to make sure that we were actually doing what we say we were doing, and we had actual results. So, even where you're at with the Community Compact, I know that you've signed it. I know that there are many other communities, over two hundred, that have signed their, their compacts. Where the actual technical assistance piece is at this moment, without having, you know, spoken directly with you and your leadership and administration, I'm not quite sure, but I would find that out right away. And I'd create a document for you, so that we would all be on the same page, and work with your current department heads to find out where that is at, and what are the problems, and where are we going to set the goal for when we can attain those things. So, I think it's really a matter of organizing the information, presenting it to you, and then following through in a way that also assures the community that not only are you following through, but your department heads, which are, I'm sure, doing even more than what I've even attributed to so far, that they're also, you know, part and parcel in our, on, on target for being able to actually fulfill the recommendations.
Wrong?
So, we have, you probably know that the town hall's falling apart.
Yeah.
Engineers, you know, not, not if you move, when you move, and sooner than later. Right now, Governor Baker asked Ryan Fatman to put his highest priority budget item for his district on his desk. So, he put Millville's town hall on the desk. We're, we're going to need help from within the town. You know, Ryan and Kevin will both need help from us...
Sure.
To pursue that, and make sure it does happen. So, it is a top priority budget item, but whether it comes through or not, that's, that's the part we're interested, you know, what, what would you be able to do to...
Well, that's a great question, and I think it's a question that I think, in terms of my background, we would fit nicely together. I've worked with both Ryan and Kevin, but I would call them my distinguished senator and my former colleague to the north here, when he was a selectman, that's Representative Curros. I think both of them know that I've worked both on the municipal side and the state side. That's the one great thing, I think, that you cannot necessarily underestimate with putting good heads together. They're now in a position that perhaps we have an awful lot to be able to offer to one another. If you are, which we know you would be looking for funding, and you'd be looking for ways of being creative with that funding, I assure you that with our collaboration, that we could get something going here. However, whether it's a bond, which takes sometimes years, and everybody cheers about, and until the actual release of that authorization happens, you could be waiting for a while. The problem here that I see is you have to come up with a number of contingencies. You have to come up with funding contingency to look at what that means in the event that, you know, even if it's a high priority, it's a placement issue. If it's not in the budget right now, then you have to figure out how else you do that. Sometimes it can be through community development monies. I've worked with the town of Bellingham when they had issues with their town hall, their historic town hall, and was able to garner them money, not only for the improvements, for the rehabilitation of that building. They also had old school buildings, I had the building in Uxbridge. Very familiar even with school renovations and historic building renovations. And I've been very successful, if you read my resume, I always took great pride in that. Whether people agree with you politically or not, when you're, you know, holding a public office, you know how hard that is, because you're making those decisions. I like being actually on the administrative side, because one of the things you do is you articulate the merits of a project. You're organized, and you put forth the rationale for it, and then you work together collaboratively with people to make those things happen. So, I might be on the flip side of this, this time, but I certainly have been on both sides of it, which is, is wonderful, because I also know when to pick up the phone and ask our senator or our representative, I see such and such is coming up on the agenda in about, you know, two weeks' time. Do you think that we'd be the, you know, this is an opportunity to consider really pushing for what we need? Because it's not a small amount that you're going to need to, to do something of this nature. I know what it's like to take Millville for its senior center application, and have a lot of legislators come up to me afterwards, who had been on the list for eight years. And if you remember and recall, we, on our very first application, in the first year we did apply, we were awarded that. And I worked with a very distinguished secretary at that time, who happened to be somebody who was appointed by a Republican governor, and we had a very strong working relationship, and not only did we get this funded, but over a half a million dollars in the town of Bellingham for housing rehabilitation assistance. And so, a lot of that is the connections you have, but it's more important, it's about lining up the documents. It's not just about asking, anybody can ask, but they're going to ask for the documentation. They're going to ask for, how do you put the project together? How are you going to assure that the town's money, if there is a, a match piece, is going to be there? How are you going to make sure that you're going to have the right people in place to actually expend the funds? I've worked with communities that have actually been remiss in that, and had to actually go back and try to hold the money for them in different ways, and then, if I hadn't been there, that wouldn't have, they would have lost the money. So, I think we could work together well, and, and I would relish the fact that I could actually work with people I've worked with in the past, and, and work effectively for this town, one way or the other.
So, in your professional career, we've all encountered difficult situations. Maybe you could talk about one of those, how you handled it, any feelings in retrospect about how you handled it?
Sure. I'll give you a, a professional one that is, one in which I think speaks to how to seize the moment and the opportunity. As you well know, the legislature and serving in state government at a time where we had three indicted speakers was not an easy thing. During two up-and-down recessions was not an easy thing. However, I always was somebody who, like you, really weighed the merits of my votes and considered my constituents back home, which meant I was actually considered one of the most independent voters. of the most independent voters during the eight years that I served, actually the most independent voter in the eight years I served. Having said that, I was still very effective in trying to get my handle on things. When we had all kinds of ethical compromises at the state level, I understood that it undermined everything that, not only that I did, but my colleagues did. And it even engended distrust at the very basic level of even municipal government. And people started to really look at, "What is government about and how can you trust it?" So, for years, I had been working on budget transparency. I had done a lot of research nationwide on how to actually put our budget at the state level online because I had, I was so used to dealing with it as a project manager and a facilitator in a large institution that was public, that you cannot be, you know, hiding that kind of information or being remiss in giving that information to the public. So, but it wasn't a high priority for the leadership. But what happened is, rather than take it personal and sit there and bury my head in the sand and say, "I hope this bad period of time because of a few people who sort of transgressed," I felt that it was important to say, "We can do things differently." And this is a way to show the public what we're not hiding resources and that we take transparency and openness of government very seriously. So, I worked very hard prior to that and seized an opportunity with the Senate, the House Chairman of Ways and Means, met many, many sessions with him, trying to explain all of the research and the documentation of how other states had done this. And was able to help lead that effort in the actual budget process and have the First Budget Transparency Act of 2010 passed. And I felt very proud to do that in combination with my colleagues who recognized at that very moment, this was something we can do. So, now, when you go online and you see our open checkbook and you see things like that, you know, I feel very good about having taken a bad situation, not personalized it and turned it around for the benefit of government, not only government officials, but the people. And so, I would love to do something similar in terms of creating online transparency with the budgeting. I know in the report, it even talks about that aspect among your department heads and the not sharing of, in real time, what's happening on a daily basis with the budget. So, those kinds of things are really natural for me to want to do. And there are some great examples right now from the towns of Arlington to Natick, who have received great acclaim and commendations for the way they present their budget. And so, your question earlier about how you would go about doing that and codifying it in bylaw, budgets themselves have a lot of steps and processes that even in the DLS, they give you great guidelines on how to follow that. But it's then up to the community on how you want to present that to the people. And I would be able to work with you on some great ideas, I think, and then see what would work great for you, some that would be very non-cost prohibitive either, but would actually make you feel, I think, that you're progressing in that area. So, I think in all, those are the kinds of things that I think, where you can take a bad situation and turn it and make it better, is the ones I would give you.
Okay. Thank you.
Your views on personnel management, goals and objectives, like they come from the industry where that was standard practice. What would be your thoughts and views on municipal level?
Well, I think municipal governments are no different than the private sector. You have to have accountability. I mean, that's one of the things that I was always known for. I was doing it in healthcare. When we talk about accountability and quality improvement, it was, you know, at a level where people's lives mattered and whether people were actually not only being accountable, but you had the best practices going forward so that people's lives were not irreparably harmed. So, take that and put it towards government, which we talk about today. It's not dissimilar. It's just the area I was working on in, sort of preceded where, you know, government has caught up and recognized performance improvement and accountability are important. In terms of personnel and personnel management, I actually have a lot of experience on government relations and in particular, labor relations. I've worked on both sides of negotiating tables, one on the management side and also on the labor advocacy side. I've served on labor management committees, grievance committees, contract negotiation committees. I actually have also served at the state level as an appointed person to represent almost 100,000 nurses. So, I've done all of those kinds of things on that side. But on the flip side, I'm also somebody who, when I was a school board official, thought it was important to actually define a subgroup or a subcommittee on contract and labor relations. And one of the first things I had offered to our board, which was very progressive and embracing change at that time, was the whole notion of interest-based bargaining. Now, this was back in, you know, 1996 or so. We actually adopted to do that going forward. We actually hired in a consultant, which more than paid for itself because we actually came to consensus in record time. And it wound up costing us less because nothing was protracted, nothing became retroactive, and nothing had to go to arbitration. And it was a very amicable and wonderful experience. So, using myself as the manager at that time, because I was representing the town, not the teachers' union at that time, that was very progressive to do. So, there are going to be times where you can lend, I think, you know, opportunities for using those skills.
Thank you. Being former school committee member, Mrs. Wing has a question.
Well, as you know, we are a regional school system with Blackstone Millville for our public school and then our vocational school with Valley Tech. So, my question is, is maybe your, it can get rough. So, I guess I'm looking to see what is your point of view, your history of working with people in a regional system or a partnership system and making that work?
Well, one of the things of not just having been a local official, but a state official, is that I've got an opportunity to work with five communities, 40,000 residents, in all of their school districts, whether they are regional or whether they're an actual town district school. So, for me, it's always been a natural to actually work cooperatively with them. I also have a background in educational, institutional leadership and research. So, for me, it's a natural to want to work with people. I mean, you know, I know sometimes communities get adversarial on who's more important, municipal or school. You have to be able to work together. I think one of the things I would be able to bring to the table is that I've always had a strong working relationship with schools and superintendents, even so much so that even when I was working in the quality field at UMass, the, he became the superintendent of the Worcester Public Schools, Superintendent Karen Donio came to me because he had seen a presentation he had done on quality change in large organizations. And at that time, he was somebody who was doing that or was charged with benchmarking in education. He went on to become the superintendent. And I only bring this up is because when you have threads of wanting to improve quality services, it doesn't matter whether you're a municipal official or a school official, you all are wanting to achieve the most or the best, highest standard for service, whether it's an educational one or a regular government service one. Having said that, there will be times where, representing and answering to your board, I would be responsible for making sure that the needs of municipal employees and the needs of the community from a leadership standpoint, and that would be defined by, hopefully, us together, but you are the ones empowered with that, that that gets heard and that gets transmitted. Because we all know that one of the great things about having a town administrator is to have that communication dialogue in advance, if possible, and then send that person out there to be that voice and to come back and say, "Okay, so how are this discussion's going? What are the plans?" I do know your principal for the Millville Elementary School. I've actually worked with him in the past. And I've worked with regional school districts and I've worked with the superintendent for Blackstone Valley Tech for many years. And I think all of those things speak to understanding when you have to say, "We need assistance. We need time to review what you're asking for us to do." But also, what are the things we can do together? And I know that I might have some insight. I was one of the very effective people for actually helping obtain a lot of educational grants that, when you relieve the burden on the school side for some of those things, you know, it helps free up your reserves for what you need on the municipal side. And so, already, I'm watching what's and has been happening with the three different budgets from the governor to the House to the Senate. And there's, a lot of people may not know, but even though the Senate was asking to have more money poured towards education, there's one part that might actually affect Blackstone Millville negatively that I just saw if it gets passed. And that has to do with the kindergarten grants. They're one of 146 or 164 school districts that receive that. It's like $55,000 at the moment, but they're taking a program, a grant program, from 16 million and going to basically fund it for 2 million. Now, it's not to say that that's going to happen, but if it happens, you see on that side, you have to be mindful of that. So, maybe it work, at some point, if that becomes a shortfall for the school and they ask for input from municipal side, we might be able to work with our legislators to find some other mechanisms that the community might be able to tap into that would benefit the school in a different way to take the pressure off of coming back to the townspeople and say, "We have a deficit." So, those are the kinds of things I think you can do creatively, but it's paying attention to that. And as far as working with schools, I would also want to do that in a budget fashion. The communities that I know that work really well and are highly organized in their financial practices, you know, are, one of the things that they do do is have joint, I call them global, meetings in the summer prior going into the fall with the school districts so that they can come back and actually, you know, work with you. And I would want to, as a town administrator, you know, be able to set that precedent so that we're not on different pages going right from the get-go, so that everybody, including the townspeople, know you're working cooperatively and your goal is, you know, to make sure all services are funded at the level that people are expecting and, more importantly, that you're doing it together.
My other question is, in your past experience and your work, Millville is limited on funds and our personnel is small. But with this position, there would be an assistant. So, how would, what would you need in the sense of other supports if you were to take this?
Well, I think institutional knowledge is very important. And, you know, even though I've known your chief of police for many years, in fact, when he was walking down the street and I saw him on the side of the road, I, you know, went right out, even out and came over to the side. And it was, it's a wonderful thing to know people and to understand the effort that they put in, the same thing on many levels in your department heads. I think when you look at this role, I'm used to, as a former minister, dealing with very few, limited resources. Having said that, I also understand that by defining this role and making it different than your executive secretary role, where you may not have empowered that person to actually be the person to be pursuing grants and to having the authority over department heads. I'm proud and happy that you're taking those steps because what it does is it actually puts the responsibility squarely on the shoulder of the town administrator. What that means then is that there are going to be different types of, an overlap that's going to occur initially when someone comes into this position. I think it's important to tap into the resources that currently exist. I think it's also important to note that, you know, when you start talking about producing documents for your board meetings and actually accessing the resources of existing department heads, you're going to rely on that. How much of that person are you going to need in terms of an assistant? I think you have to see how that goes. There's a lot of people who will get hired as a town administrator and right off the bat, you know, they're going to say, "I need a full-time assistant. I need this person at this particular amount of hours." I think we'd have to discuss that. I do know that, I saw that, you know, in the budget, there might be some issues with that going forward. But I think we could dialogue about what is really necessary and at what the timing could be and maybe work on some aspect of being able to do that. There's only so many different ways you can do that. I mean, if it's not found in a budget, you have to figure out ways to either, you know, have the townspeople authorize it at a later date. But there's some other things that might come to bear fruit, which would make it easier to put money towards something like that, too. And, you know, if I was in the position, I would actually try to talk about those kinds of things, maybe even things that you have slated for capital items that you've already got approval for. You might be able to find some ways to find the same kind of resources outside of that. And so, that may free up your ability to fund positions going forward. But a lot of that has to do with how you creatively look at the budget and look for efficiencies and look for ways to add value into the budget without harming the existing services. So, I see what you have it at. I would say that I have to honor what you're trying to start the position with. But having said that, I think I might be able to offer some ideas on going forward of what makes most sense and how you want to make sure that the government services that you're providing aren't going to be somehow disrupted by not having certain aspects administratively, perhaps, taken care of. Or you know that there's some other aspects that you want to pursue and you want to make sure the person has the ability and the time to pursue those kinds of things. So, I think it'll be a balancing act to start with, but it also, I don't know where you're at with that. I haven't seen enough of the dialogue that you guys have had about what you're really anticipating and what you would like to see as an administrative role to the town administrator.
The, my, that would have been my last question to ask of your expectation. This isn't necessarily the last question.
Okay.
Day one, you come into town. What do you expect from the town to get oriented?
Well, I think it all depends on what your leadership and your administrative leadership style is. I've always been somebody who's a fairly open type of personality. I am actually a trained facilitator, Mr. Chairman. I've actually taken some of the most politically charged, and when I'm saying political, I'm not even talking politics in the germane sense. I'm talking about a major medical institution type of politics where someone does not or is very resistive to changes or proposals that actually, you know, would really benefit patients in the long run, their safety, their outcomes, it looked like best practices. And I was somebody who actually would sometimes get in a room with 60 stakeholders and say, "Okay, what are we going to do?" My job was to actually move those people forward, move them towards actual little goals and plans and do strategic planning with them. So, coming into this kind of role, I mean, what's great about this is, not because I've been a town administrator, I've worked with town administrators for many years. I know what makes a great town administrator. I also know what makes not a great town administrator. And so, for me, I love the fact that it is the first town administrator role. And I would absolutely want to make sure that I'm tapping into the resources of the people who have served this community for a very long time, including your board. So, I mean, one of the first things you have to do is be open and listen and create the dynamic that there is a shift here. It's a very palpable shift. You can feel it among your people during the parade. You could, you hear people talking on the sidelines about a lot of things that Millville's doing. I sense that probably at your town meeting, you saw that and people overwhelmingly adopted what you put forward. That was great planning on your part despite the fact that you didn't know where it was going to go. You're moving in a direction with the community compact. So, all of those things, day one, you walk in, I go back and reintroduce myself to everybody. I'm not the representative anymore. I am the town administrator. It's a very different role. And I am clear about that. And that's one of the reasons I wanted to pursue this, because I do love working with town governments. And that was perhaps my best expertise. It's not the highfalutin policy part. It's really getting down to details and understanding how to move things forward. So, you know, actually bringing everybody together, making sure I set that stage for, you know, the importance of what you have imparted to me. And I know these reports are really important, but I think we also get a chance to dialogue about that going forward. And aside from being open and making sure everyone knows it's a reintroduction, I think it's also listening to them to find out where they're at. Where have they felt that they have made substantial gains? Where are they feeling that they can use, you know, a different approach, that they are looking for certain resources? There may be so many things that come out of that, that one of the things that I would want to be able to do is to capture that and then go forward in setting the priorities. Of course, the first priorities are making sure that those documents that are coming from the DLS are followed through and that you've actually, you know, followed those recommendations and put them forth. And then, from there, you will have all kinds of opportunities to address many other things. And I think you'd be able to do that.
Yeah.
I don't know if that was my question. Oh, that's okay, because I usually put mine out, but it's all right.
So, you spoke a little bit about-
So, you spoke a little bit about grants on a few issues. With a grant, you know, as anybody, being as a former legislator, that timing is like one of the most important keys to a grant. But I did notice that our posting was April 11th to have applications in and yours came in on the 13th. I just would hate to see that practice take, be continued if you became the administrator.
Oh, sorry. Mine was postmarked on the 11th and I actually wanted to send it electronically because I was out of state and I found out they didn't have an electronic address to send it to. So, I agree with you. That wouldn't be something that you'd have to worry about going forward. I'd wanna bring your attention, if I could, Selectman Barrett, that I would work very hard to understanding what schedules are for grants and grant opportunities, whether it was $6 million for the bridges out here and making sure that I was attuned to when those opportunities might exist, from bringing in and creating a tour to making sure that the town was actually following through on their part and communicating quite extensively with your former DPW director as well as your Executive Secretary here. I can assure you that the monies related to the grants and the timing of those was something that I almost have an instinctual understanding of. And I think if you talk to anybody, whether it's those people who worked with the senior center, to those people who worked on the bridge grants, to all of the different grants that I had worked with, with the school, which by the way, I, some of these have only been one-time things and they've never actually been able to be successfully obtained since that time. So, I know what that means. I was always in constant contact with my municipal officials, making sure that they understood when the deadlines were. I would regularly send out letters and you can ask any of your former municipal officials, every time that I knew a grant opportunity was coming, that they understood the timing of it and the sensitivity and anything I could do, and I don't mean just writing a letter of support, I'm talking about anything that I could do, I would do that. And I've actually written grants myself, too. Everything from heritage tree grants for, you know, the first one our town ever received, even the one for the town of Blackstone, I helped.
We welcome all grants.
I know you do, I know you do. And, you know, and preservation grants, so, yeah. And I just wanted to make sure you understood that. That was something I actually contacted the...
Other applicants to say, "Hey."
Oh, no, no.
As long as it was postmarked the 11th.
It was, it was, and I actually contacted the Chairman of your search committee in advance to let them know that it was forthcoming and it was postmarked and it went out of the city of Worcester. And only because I had just flown in and that was, that was a problem. So, anyway, so, I hope I was able to allay that concern.
Yeah, 'cause grants are, as far as a household budget would be over time, that's a grant is our overtime, you know? Until we can do some economic development, but even then, grants will still be important.
Yeah, well, even for this town, if you take collectively the 14 million between this and the bridges and also housing rehabilitation assistance grants that had come in, you know, even I had achieved one of the first educational reserve grants, pothole grants for the Blackstone Millville School because of the fact that we had incurred increased transportation costs because of the bridge and the school buses couldn't get across, you know, things like that were out-of-the-box thinking and $174,000 later that the taxpayers didn't have to pick up. Or a nutrition grant for a refrigerator of $10,000 or the actual notion of over $500,000 for a community development block grant, which by the way, this town, because of its overall economic indicators for its residents, one of the things that I think we have not been doing as well as you probably would like to do is, and it goes back to like 2004, one of the last real big CDGB grants for half a million dollars was for Millville housing rehabilitation. And since that time, you know, the resources have not been put into really trying to go after those kinds of things and...
We need a master plan.
There you go. Well, there's a whole nother piece of it. Master planning is important, just like your capital planning is important, but I, and we can talk and address that, you know.
We have the draft.
Okay.
One key that was holding up the master plan, year, year, year and a half ago, was we weren't, you, our former zoning, as you know, was bedroom. So, we have rezoned to make it a little bit more interesting for business to wanna, to wanna come. We still have a little bit, a couple little pieces left of the master plan to put together and then, so, I mean... We're hoping that you'd be able to assist the planning board in whichever way needed.
Sure, sure. Well, I think the town administrator is gonna be that link, you know, in the cog of the wheel. And the only other thing I can offer, Roland, and I can only speak about my, my experience, you know, I know you're asking questions and I'm trying to make sure that I don't think that you might remember something or know something, but I was a former board member of the Blackstone Valley Chamber of Commerce and I wasn't a business owner. And I'm one of the few people that was put on the board because of the fact that I worked very effectively in understanding how to move economic projects forward and, and everything from workforce development to technology in the Blackstone Valley. And again, a lot of it is making sure that everybody's on the same page and working and looking for resources to make some of those technical reports a reality. The one thing I can tell you is communities that do really well in getting grants, you can take the town of Bellingham and Dennis Frang, who's one of my references, who's a solid, solid, proven town administrator, we worked great together and I'll tell you why, because that town, no matter what the leadership was on the board and as it changes, 'cause every town, you know, you get tired sometimes after being a municipal official for a while and you retire. Well, there's other new people that come up on, on the board. But even in recessionary times, when, when resources are scant, if you can actually put some resources to the planning part in developing the report and starting to talk to people about the different avenues you could pursue, when the monies do become available and the uptick begins, and we're in an uptick right now in the last 10 years, you know, I tell everybody, you know, enjoy that period of time because we inevitably know there's a wax and wane. So, this year, after a decade of, you know, incremental increases in local aid, they can say, you know, you know, 4.5% is, you know, a record amount to give back to the communities. However, we all know that communities always need resources. So, I would say that having worked on those kinds of things, it's important that a community use a little resource money to get the technical planning done and get themselves in the queue. Another thing that I would really work closely with is our Central Mass Regional Planning Commission and any other available council that actually is a grant authority and make sure that you're present. One of the biggest mistakes that a town administrators make is they just send in the documentation and they're never there when a volunteer board is making decisions about infrastructure. And I learned a long time ago to show up, be present and articulate for the community and you can be more successful in that regard.
Coincidentally, Lieutenant Governor's gonna be in Worcester tomorrow for breakfast meeting. I was trying to make that, but I have a medical appointment.
Well, you can always send an emissary on your behalf, you know, somebody from your planning board, someone from your, you know, if I was the town administrator, you could send me, but until that ever happens, I think you have some great people who are resourceful and you can work with one another to do that. And I think she would, you know, definitely appreciate that and having worked with her for a number of years, eight out of her 10 years, you know, we work together quite well.
You've anticipated some of my questions. Do you have a final question?
I don't, except for if you have questions for us.
Well, I don't think I have questions. I think you're, I do wanna say something, I think your, your search committee did an exemplary job. They did a really great vetting and I know that you have to rely on that for them to send people forward, but they did. They were very conscientious about the kinds of questions they asked and very detailed and thorough. And one of the things I had asked them in closing were what was the, because they asked me, what was the one quality I thought I could offer in relation to those people, other people, who may be finalists or semifinalists? And I had said that it was my dedication to the townspeople here, that I really feel that way. I want to stay, I want to work, I want to be able to offer my services, but nobody's gonna work harder and care more about the people in this town as, as a candidate. That was what I thought I could offer to the community. But when I asked them in response, I had a question, what was the one quality, because the job description's very detailed, you know, the questions we all have are quite detailed, what was the one quality that they were looking for from the person that they were gonna put forward? And, you know, each one of them had different kinds of things to say and some of the responses were looking for a strong leadership type of person, but somebody who was open to listening as well, somebody who had consistency, competence and competence, somebody who had financial acumen and some labor relations, somebody who had a long-term vision and a marketing ability for the economic thing, so you brought that up, so it's the second time I've heard about that. And somebody who had wanted to be here long-term. And I know what this community's resources are, we're not looking for a pie in the sky. I really would like to have the opportunity to, to continue working in a way that is meaningful because at the end of the day, you know, we're only on this earth for so many years, I've learned that the, you know, most tragically, more recently, and, you know, you just make choices in your life and this is a choice that I wanted to put forward and I would love to work with your board and I would love to work with this community again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Felt like I was at work, I almost took to the buckle. Quenched my thirst.
High sodium in the water.
That's why I thought they had a water jug, like a pulling spring.
So, did we do all right in terms of everything?
So, yeah, again, I followed my little number wise. I mean, I think the glaring positive is knowing the state budget, knowing the resources and knowing the people. Even at one point, there was something about a budget, like how, and I didn't even know it, but the, the getting money from the pothole for the school for busing, for that, I mean, it was just like creative in the manner of how that was used. I think that's a definite positive in the candidate, so...
It definitely is a plus to have the connection and the experience with the grants.
Yeah, it's not just the connection, it's the knowledge of it. I mean, 'cause that's always, you know, figuring out how to creatively get to them and twist them or turn them and make them fit, make that fit for our town, so...
And I have to agree with her in terms of the search committee doing a great job and getting three qualified candidates, although we haven't seen the last gentleman yet.
Just noted that she referenced the Board of Assessors 2010, which is probably not easy to find, so there was probably, I mean, I know we've talked about it in meetings, so...
And she wrote about that in her letter.
The lack of, lack of a job within municipalities, you know, is obvious, but comparable work is there. So, when I say municipalities and the outside of the state rep piece, you know, being an administrator within a town would be a new, a new venture based on her resume.
Although she was a selectman for one term, so...
Oh, those one-term selectmen. Yeah. Well, I know, there's a definite understanding of local government.
Hello, is this your opponent, Ms. McMillan?
Hi, Jennifer Wayne.
I understand you've done some homework.
Yes, I actually have. A bunch of things I've researched and have taken a look at relative to the community and some of the things that I see as opportunities and challenges and hopefully we can have a discussion about that.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
And where do we begin? Your resume was, is impressive.
Thank you.
The one question I immediately have is that you were participating in town government for 17 years and then the last 12 years you've been in education.
Yes, I have, in the private sector, in private elementary school.
And your motivation to come back to municipal government?
Actually, my work with the Blackstone Valley Chamber of Commerce, helping them with some economic development projects, serving on a few committees of the Economic Development Task Force, also the Blackstone Valley Leadership Group that's trying to locate a, the community college in the Blackstone Valley, having done that. And just, like I said, just a general feeling that, you know, that's where my interests are at this point. I've always been a people person, I've always enjoyed government, I've always enjoyed working with people and helping people and it's part of, you know, who I am and what I'm about.
What attracts you to Millville?
Millville is an interesting community. I live right next door and actually five minutes away in Uxbridge. I'm familiar with Millville and all, basically all the towns in the Blackstone Valley, having worked in Millbury and having worked in Uxbridge. And I think I have a pretty good understanding of some of the issues that are facing Millville in terms of potentially, you know, increasing tax revenues through economic development, trying to maintain and preserve the historical and cultural charm of the community, you know, a lot of the issues are very similar throughout the valley in terms of having an understanding of what the valley is and how we want, how we all envision it. It's a quality of life issue, people love living in relatively rural communities and they pay for that and that's, that's one of the things that I enjoy doing.
I bet you've been through the DLS report.
I have, actually, yep, I reviewed that.
So, basically, you understand our priorities in that our goal is to follow the recommendations of that report. And the reason we gathered here tonight is that we're addressing the top... And the reason we gathered here tonight is that we're addressing the top priority to bring in a town administrator. Recite from that, we need to develop financial, do some, develop financial policy and do a lot of things in that regard, so that we become a more viable community going forward financially.
Okay. I actually put together one of the documents, I put together basically a series of financial objectives, which I had put together when I was in Bolton, basically outlining some of, you know, the things that I would do in terms of managing the budget, department head meetings, creating a financial team made up of the accountant, the, you know, member from the Board of Assessors, member from the Board of Selectmen, finance committee, all of the key players, to basically keep them in the loop and to help us as a team, number one, be aware of, you know, how the budget is progressing, and number two, you know, avoiding potential conflict in the budget process as you get closer to town meeting, so that everybody essentially is on the same page. I have also, in other communities, developed a capital plan, so I'm familiar with the process of doing that. And I feel that, you know, that the finance part of it is one of my strengths.
Economic development, how do you view that, the potential for Millville?
Actually, I've done a lot of research on Millville in terms of economic development. I've ridden around the community, I got the zoning map to take a look at, you know, what parcels are available. I have, you know, looked at the parcels down on Central Street, looked at the parcels out on Lincoln Street. There's a couple of things on Route 122 that make it difficult for the town to actually develop that land, one being the railroad, and two being the Blackstone River. And I think it would be easier to get a bridge across the river than to get a rail crossing from the Providence and Worcester Railroad, but, you know, neither one is impossible. And looking at that, I see opportunities, but the limitations are, one is that the town doesn't have any infrastructure. So in terms of envisioning what the town wants for commercial and industrial development, you're limited by the fact that you don't have water, which a lot of manufacturers require as part of the manufacturing process. And two, generally insurance companies, you know, particularly if you're a business, require that you have a sprinkler building, and as a result, if you don't have a sprinkler building, then your rates increase substantially, and that will impact your decision to locate. The second thing is you don't have any sewer in any kind of manufacturing process that produces any kind of byproduct. That's not something that you want to be putting into the ground, so, you know, those two things, I think, limit somewhat the opportunity for the town to do, you know, serious, like manufacturing type of applications. However, you know, there are possibilities that the town could partner with other communities in the area if they have water and sewer relatively near, and there's a big push now in terms of Governor Baker's proposal for mass modernization. I know that the town is part of the Community Compact, and there's a lot of movement towards the, the development of, you know, shared resources by communities, and, you know, that's a definitely, definitely an opportunity. I think the downtown area, there are potential things there in term, number one, in terms of the bike path. I'm an avid biker, I bike a lot in the summer time, and I've ridden on a lot of the trails, the Blackstone Valley Trail being one, but also the Falmouth Trail, the Shining Sea, I've done the one out in Noratech Trail and out in Niamhurst. And I know what kind of, like, traffic those trails produce, and there's an opportunity there for small business, some micro-business to, you know, as I mentioned during my interview with the screening committee, you have a restaurant that's kind of abandoned right down the street, but.
It's more than kind of.
Yeah. But there are, but if you've ridden on the Shining Sea path, for example, you go one street over and you can stop at a restaurant, and a lot of people, they make an afternoon of it, they say, oh, let's stop, have dinner, and then ride back, or an ice cream parlor, or a bike shop that property across the street would be an excellent location for a bike shop on, on the, on the river, on the side of the path.
The old storefront, yeah. The house with the storefront.
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, and that, as far as I'm aware, and having ridden on that trail, I'm not sure if there is a bike shop along there. Bike shops are pretty popular when you have a flat tire, or you want to, you know, for an application, when you want to buy a bike, it's convenient for the bike owner to say, hey, take the bike out for twenty minutes or half hour, bring it back.
Bike rentals as well.
And, yeah. An ice cream, you know, like I said, the ice cream, you know, place where people would stop, have a drink of water. There's a lot of potential for micro-business, and the other part of that, that I think, is that it also gives us the opportunity to look at the downtown in terms of developing some kind of a village concept. I know that the town has worked with Central Mass Regional Planning on some of that, I'm not sure what the status of that is, but looking at signage, looking at opportunities to promote, you know, other businesses in the downtown area that have a synergy that would help bring people off the trail and into the downtown area, looking at, talking to the developer of the old Blackstone Potato Ship building there, are there any other potential adaptive uses for that property? There are also other opportunities in terms of economic development. I don't know how much has been done in terms of solar farms, I know that there's an overlay district, but a number of communities have partnered with solar companies to develop, you know, farms that, number one, are a green solution, and number two, a, an opportunity in some cases for the residents of the, of the community to benefit from that. There are plenty of grant opportunities, I've been researching that. You know, the Mass Works Program is a program that provides money for infrastructure and for, you know, community and economic development, the Community Development Block Grant Program, which is a HUD program. There's three criteria for that, it's creation of jobs, benefit to low and moderate income people, and the removal of what they call slum and blight, which is geared more towards the city environment. There is also the Community Development Fund, which can be used, and there's a Mass Downtown Initiative, which would help with the streetscape type of application. Another thing that I thought of in particular, because I was talking to another individual from another community, and I'm just throwing these things out here, I'm not advocating or saying these are things that the town should definitely do, but in the absence of economic development, when you look at your tax base, that, you know, ninety-three percent of your tax levy is residential, only three percent of the tax, you know, levy is commercial industrial property. So the taxpayers, residential homeowners, are really carrying the weight, and of that tax levy, seventy-four percent of that is what we use to fund the budget, and only eight percent is the state funding from the Commonwealth, and the remainder of that is, you know, fees and other sources of revenue. So when you look at that, one of the things that I was thinking, and I was talking to an individual, was that the creation of over fifty-five housing, now, the beauty of that is that those units don't provide children into the school system at twelve, thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars apiece. Generally, if they, an average tax bill in town is around forty thousand, thirty-nine hundred dollars, you have fifty units at four thousand dollars, that's two hundred thousand dollars. You're going to have some services, you're going to have to provide ambulance services and some police services, but even that, if you deduct it off, or you put a hundred units, you have four hundred thousand dollars, and all of a sudden you're looking at, you know, seventy-five thousand dollars in expense in terms of services, you're looking at a net gain of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And that's also depending upon whether they're private ways versus town ways, if they're town ways, and we're going to maintain them and plow them and take care of them, but a lot of the condominium developments that are over fifty-five are individually owned and maintained by the homeowners association. So that was something that came up, and I said, oh, that's kind of an interesting concept, that it's a way to generate revenue for the community, but not increase the tax burden on the residential taxpayers. The other downside of that is potential traffic that could generate from another hundred or a hundred fifty cars being in the community. So those kind of things are the things that I'm looking at in terms of economic development. Having, like I said, I have ridden around the community, I actually took the zoning map, and I was trying to say, well, geez, you really need a big parcel of land if you're going to, particularly if you want to rezone it, and there are obstacles to it, and I guess it would come down to the town really visioning what it wants in terms of commercial industrial development, because it is limited, and there's certain types of business you definitely do not want, like a, you know, hazmat facility, or a medical waste facility, or, you know, in some communities, you know, a gas power plant, like in the town of Exford, they tried to put in not even a month and a half ago, you know? So those kind of things are things that I've been looking at, and trying to see how I could help, you know, as a town administrator in the town of Millville, how I could help the community, you know, address some of those, those gaps in terms of, you know, providing some relief for taxpayers.
Addressing the requirements to fulfill a compact with the Commonwealth, our immediate steps would be the financial policies. And how do you see that coming together? What would be the components of that?
Well, the components would be, like I said, putting together a financial team, made up of the key players, meeting on a regular basis, discussing the budget, where, you know, where we're headed, actually doing revenue projections. Probably putting together some kind of a revenue plan in terms of looking at a five-year historical average of the key components of the budget versus, you know, projecting out those costs over another three to five years. That's, when you get past three years, it's kind of, kind of fuzzy, but you can do it, and that sort of gives you a plan to identify how you're going to pay for things. I know, once again, that the town is looking at the municipal center, the municipal center at some point is going to have to be replaced, and looking at how you're going to fund that, and if you're going to fund it, you're going to, you know, you could try to do it through some bonds, through, I'm sorry, through some grants, I'm not sure what is available out there, but they had a very active senior program, which I'm sure the town got, you know, this building from, and we built a similar facility up in Millbury when I was up there. And there was a library program, so there are potential grants, so I don't think you're going to be able to get a hundred percent of a grant to fund a building, but then you have to look at how you're going to structure the debt that you, or the money that you're going to borrow to pay for the facility. And I also read in, when I saw a call, that the regional school district is looking at, you know, making certain improvements to windows and HVAC and roofs, and once again, that comes back to how are you going to fund it? And the first step, I think, is identifying, you know, those sources of, and structuring the debt in such a way that it phases in in a sequence that makes it not a burden to the taxpayer. It might involve, it may or may not involve, you know, debt exclusion or two and a half override. Generally, debt exclusion is for capital projects versus an operational override, which would be a two and a half proposition. Looking at, one of the things I looked at is I noticed that the town doesn't have a bond rating, that would be one of the first things that I would work on with the accountant, to, to get a bond rating so that we are able to at least get favorable rates on any money that we need to do those kind of projects. And I think the town has taken those steps. When I look at the financials and I see that the town has four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in free cash, which is really, you know, a good thing, and it's, you know, as an operational.
That was a one-time shot.
Yeah, that's, well, I was going to say, it's a systemic problem if you start using free cash as a way to fund an operating budget. But then, by the same token, you have stabilization. Now, when bonding agencies look at the town, they look at, you know, are they saving money? And one of the ways you save money is through stabilization, and the fact you have two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars in stabilization shows your commitment to operate efficiently and to do your part in terms of, you know, put together a sound financial system that, that's, that will help you get rates that you, you should be getting, because, you know, a point or two on the rate can be huge over the course of twenty or thirty years.
Yeah. Definitely. So we have, we spoke a little bit already about a master plan, so we have one all but done, it's, the draft is made. How would you be able to assist the planning board on completing that and then implementing it once it's?
I would, once again, I would, I would, one of the things that, with me, is that I have an open door policy. I look at, you know, the residents in town and the board and committee members, you know, who are taxpayers, as our customers, and looking at it from that perspective, and trying to, you know, when somebody comes into my office and they have a problem, I want to be there with an open door to say, all right, this is substantial enough to say more my time. And I also, I said this to the screening committee, that you learn more by listening than talking, and would, you know, like with the, with the master plan, it's a visioning process, it's a sit-down kind of, all right, this is where we, where we are, and this is where we want to be. And looking at those two things, and figuring out from a different dynamic, you know, in terms of, you know, where do we want to be in terms of residential growth, how much open space is still left, do we want to preserve that open space, or do we want to allow it to be developed? Do we, do we, do we want certain types of industries, where do we want those industries? Are there opportunities, other places in town that we could rezone that would allow us to get those industries and connect it, some infrastructure from another community? Those are the kind of things that you want to be looking at. And, and like I said, that whole village feel of it, you know, it's a mill village, it's, you know, it's Millville, it's, you know, the, the whole sense of, and that's what the Blackstone Valley is. I was very actively involved with the chamber in the Linwood Mill Project. I don't know if you're familiar with that, it was basically an abandoned building, and they did a beautiful job with it. I worked with the developer and his wife, and we were able to get them, one of the things we did was we got the area designated. When I was at Millbury, we, we had a valley-wide application that created an economic target area for the entire Blackstone Valley. And by doing that, we gave all of the communities in the valley an opportunity to designate certain areas, what they call an economic opportunity area. And by giving them that status, you give them the ability to do TIF agreements, you give them tax incentives to say, all right, hey, this is something, you know, we want, well, we're willing to take a little bit of a cut to, to get the business here, but not forever, and it benefits everybody, and those kind of things are the kind of things that you want to look at. I don't know if I answered your question.
Yeah.
It was sort of a roundabout answer.
So we have a.
Basically, the question was to see if you, you had a plan.
Well, my plan was.
A rough idea, you know, I mean, and I know every town has different wants and needs for the master plan and different ways that they'd implement it, but, so, really, the question was to see if you had the experience to just take it and run with it.
Yeah, well, like I said, it's a planning document, and generally a planning document goes out ten, fifteen, twenty years, it's, it's, you know, a dynamic thing, it's not something you do, although a lot of communities do do this, they do it and put it on the shelf, and ten years later, they say, oh, geez, we never did that, or we never did that, you know, that kind of thing.
So that brings me to my, my point, is that you have a long-term master plan, a vision for the future. My question is now, what is your view on a strategic plan to get you there?
Well, I would.
If you had any involvement in developing strategic plans to.
Well, what I would do is, I know I forwarded a document to you about creation of an industrial park in commercial area. Now, that was done in response to a, an interview I had gone on, actually about a year and a half ago, in, at a community in the Blackstone Valley, and that was the big thing. And I, when I was in the meeting and I was talking to the board, I sort of, like, was trying to just in my head piece all of the pieces together and said, all right. said, alright, you know, I explained how I'd approach it verbally, but then I got home and I said, you know, there's a process to this, and this is how I would do it. So I sat down at my computer and I developed how I envisioned I would create a commercial industrial property. The interesting thing is, I still haven't created that park, but, you know, it showed the steps, you know, in terms of getting, you know, having, making sure we had 43D, expedited permitting, having days every month where, you know, potential developers could come in, talk to us, have all the permitting officials in one place so they could get all their answers answered at one time, marketing properties in the community for specific types of businesses. Once again, that comes back to the master plan, you know, the master plan ideally is gonna identify what types of businesses you want, it's gonna identify what are the quality of life, things that you want in the community, the things you don't want to see destroyed by haphazardly putting a business here and a business here, and no synergy or connection between those businesses. You know, it's approaching it from a holistic standpoint, where all the pieces fit together so that the plan is actually executed in some kind of a fashion that meets the objectives of maintaining the type of community that you want to live in.
Jenny-
We do want to keep it a bedroom community, so to speak, but we need the-
You do need 3%, we have 3% commercial, that is so small, it's unbelievable, I mean, and the local aid is only 8% of the budget, $441,000, that's pretty small, too, actually, although the regional school gets over $10 million, and you guys, you know, provide over $3 million towards the schools that are the operating budget, but-
Alls I would like to see going forward is maybe a barber shop and a coffee-
I think you're thinking of yourself right now.
No little, no little general store?
General store, we have one, but a little general store, give it the old, Old Town USA look.
That's streetscapes, that's, you know, saying-
Barber shop, a diner, a bakery.
They're businesses that, if you, if you work with a developer, number one, visually, it creates a visual village theme, like the light, the lighting that you put in the downtown, the street signs, the signage on the buildings, the exteriors of the buildings, you get money to help the business owners do that, but it also, what it does is it creates a synergy. If you have a barber shop, you're gonna go next door and get a coffee, if you go next door and get a coffee, you're gonna go to the general store and get a milk and some milk and newspapers, and those kind of things, and that's the-
You want them all to complement each other.
Yeah, and that's the point I was trying to make with the bike trail, and I think you're gonna be amazed at how many people are gonna be coming through Millville on the bike trail on a Saturday or Sunday, I mean, like-
When I'm down the Cape in the summer, it seems like everywhere there's a trailhead, there's bike rentals.
Alright, yeah, and the bike rental, yeah, absolutely.
Or there's bike shops.
Or a bike shop.
And then ice cream, and coffee.
Yeah, yeah, and people, like I said, you'd be surprised how many people, you know, my wife and I do the Shining Sea Trail a lot, because we have a trailer, and we put our trailer down the Cape in Falmouth, so we go down there quite a bit almost every weekend, and for, actually, just for May, April, May, June, and then we take the summer off, and then we go September, October, they have a deal at the campground, so, but we, when we're down there, we do the bike trail, and we'll go, let's say, alright, we'll start out at one end, we'll go down to Woods Hole, we'll stop, we'll have dinner, lunch, and, you know, and then get back on and ride, you know, it's a destination, it can be a destination kind of thing, if it's strategically planned.
Jenny, do you have anything?
Yeah, so in your professional career, there's always things that never go right, and things that are difficult, so maybe you could talk about one of those, how you addressed it, and then if you had any, in hindsight, would you have changed anything?
Actually, it's interesting, because it relates, sort of, to the power plant that was here a month and a half ago in Oxbridge, because I was in Oxbridge when they proposed the first power plant, and the gentleman from the power plant came into my office one afternoon, it was, and I was sitting there, and they said, oh, we're from Enron Par, we all know how that ended, but they, they said, well, we're interested in building it, and they talked about the revenues and the money that would be coming into the town, and I was saying, oh, well, that sounds like a heck of a proposal, and I then went with them, we got the zoning map, and, you know, we took a look at the parcels that they were interested in, and I told, informed the board, and I didn't realize, once again, from the community, that that was not something that they wanted, I really thought, well geez, you know, who wouldn't want that kind of revenue? And that was a mistake, I, you know, I probably should have not met with them until I had cleared it through the board, and the learning experiences, like I said, you know, not making an assumption about things that, you know, I don't know the answer to, and interestingly enough, they built the Ocean State Power Plant 100, 200 feet over, yards over the Oxbridge border, and we actually, you know, you get some of the impact from that, that's like when they were proposing it, feet up the road, you know, they, for some reason, power plants always build next to the edge of the other town, but the, and they put dumps at the edge of the other town, too, that's a historical fact, but you look at, you know, some communities want it, you look at Wheel Obrator in Millbury, now, Wheel Obrator in Millbury, it's off in a non-residential area, it's on Route 20, it's in a perfect location, it generates over a million dollars in revenue for the town, I mean, it's, it's a good thing there, you know, so like I said, it all depends on the community, it's not something I would advocate, but it's something that, you know, it's a community decision, it's a vision of whether or not, you know, that is worth, you know, the people in town wanting, something like that, but I learned very quickly, an expert, it wasn't, so, that and racetracks, but-
And no racetracks.
No airports.
No airports, right, I remember that, too.
So I had a question, as you know, you've done your homework, so you know that we're a regional school system, so we're with Blackstone Millville for our public school, and then we have our vocational school with that Blackstone Valley Tech, so things can always get interesting around those regional and partnerships with them. Have you worked collaboratively with, you know, regional school systems or things of that sort, and if you could, maybe just talk about that?
Yeah, actually, I have, in two communities, I worked at Bolton, as part of the Neshoba Regional, and Carlisle was Concorde Carlisle, and they maintained their own elementary school, but the Concorde Carlisle was a separate entity, and the same thing with Bolton, with the Neshoba, it was, I believe, Harvard Stowe and Bolton, so, yeah, I worked with the superintendents in both communities, had a good working relationship with them, you know, specifically, I can't, you know, it's been a while, so I can't really draw from my memory any specific instances where, you know, I can, you know, illustrate something about our relationship, but I've always had a good working relationship in Millbury with Dave Roach as a superintendent, and Mr. Palermo, same thing, he was there, so.
Alright, thank you.
Are there any questions you have of us, aside from what we've missed?
I would say, well, I guess one of the first questions I'd have is, you know, you are hands-on in the community, you're seeing what's going on, what do you consider, my fir-, I know that the financial piece of the, you know, DLS report is important to the community, part of the community compact, but what other issues do you see as priority issues, if I was selected as your town administrator?
Well, we have, we have some properties that, combined, we've lost $578,000.
And that's a tax title.
So, I mean, and I know some of them are out in the woods, top of the granite mountain, and nobody wants it, and that's why they stopped paying taxes on it, obviously, but what, what, you know, I mean, look at the map, see which ones are developable, you know-
It's interesting you mentioned that.
Cheap, to, you know, affordable for somebody to, you know, and, you know, what process can we take to fix that issue?
When I was looking at the zoning map today, and I'm looking at some of these, the parcels in, you know, the, it's a residential area, and I'm looking at it, saying, my God, there's huge parcels there, but they're landlocked.
Yeah.
You know, it's like, well, how do you, you know, or if they were, they're close up here, but they're landlocked, you know, and I'm looking, trying to say, well, geez, where are their parcels that could potentially be developed, if not, like I said, for the housing, but, or for, you know, commercial industrial could be rezoned? Is, are there opportunities, and I originally, when I originally talked to the screening committee, I thought, well, Oxbridge was trying to develop an area very close to the Millville line, and that was several, I believe contiguous parcels, and I was trying to figure out specifically whether or not the Millville portion of that, if there's enough in there to pull together and do some kind of a joint thing with Oxbridge that, you know, potentially could benefit both communities, because they do have water and sewer, I know the water is on, the waters, I don't know if the water's all the way down the south of Oxbridge, I know the sewer isn't, but the sewer plant just had a $44 million.
There's water in Oxbridge, a half a mile from my house.
Yeah, it's the Concorde property.
With fire hydrants.
Okay, alright, yeah, but that, like, that's the type of thing that you want to be looking to, you know, that benefits Oxbridge, because they generate revenues from those, the sale of the water, and from, you know, basically expanding their system, and you benefit, because you have, all of a sudden, you have, you know, from an insurance viewpoint, you know, fire protection, you have hydrants, and, you know, to, you know, some pumps, or not some pumps, where are you going, dry hydrants, and, or pumpers to put out a fire.
Yeah.
I think we covered most of it.
Yeah, well, he had asked, Roland had talked about the tax titles and that, but you mentioned something early, and I think one of the big concerns within our town is that free cash being used to fund the budget, and how systematic that is.
It can be a systemic problem, if you consistently do that, now, one of the reasons you generate that kind is that you're very conservative in terms of your estimates, you know, when you, when you do the, you know, for example, the excise tax estimate for the year, you know, I want to say it was $150,000 to $160,000 more than you estimated, and that flows to free cash, or free cash is the money that's left over, or over and above, you know, revenue versus estimates, it's also free cash is, at the end of the year, you end up closing out all the accounts, and any money that's unexpended fund balances flow into free cash, and then the third thing is, like, extraordinary income, where you sell a piece of land, or you get a grant, something that won't repeat itself, and that's another danger, you sell a piece of property for $500,000, and you use that money to start funding operational items, and the next year, you don't have the $500,000 to replicate it. The $495,000 for cash is a healthy number, I mean, that's a real number, but you're taxing it, you know, and the other thing I notice is that you're taxing right to the levy limit, you know, the excess capacity on the, the tax rate is $18,000, I mean, that's really nothing, I mean, you have no room, no wiggle room, short of doing an override or a debt exclusion to increase that.
Start the job on, if you start the job on day one, what would you expect the town to get you oriented in?
Well, I think there's a period where you do, you know, my first thing would be, you know, meeting with all the department heads, going to the different locations where they are, introducing myself, trying to get to some of the, you know, some of the, the planning board, zoning board, introducing myself, and, you know, disfamiliarizing myself, and actually, maybe having some kind of a department head meeting, and having, you know, a roundtable discussion about what's going on in your department, you know, what do you see of the issues, and getting feedback. That's another thing that I think is an important thing, is, well, a couple things, one, it's important that we have goals, that we start out on a, from a place where you say, this is what we're gonna have in six months, is what we're gonna be doing in a year, and review those goals, but also, having department head meetings where you're, me having communication with the department heads and being able to, to, you know, find out what's going on in their departments, and how I can serve and help them also, and the third thing is having some kind of an all boards meeting, you know, maybe once or twice a year, where you invite everybody in, you know, it may be something that, you know, maybe half hour, could be three hours, depending upon what people want to talk about, but it's a good way of finding out what's going on in the community, because you're not dealing with everybody every single day, and it's a good way for the board to, to learn what's going on in the community.
Unfortunately, in the past, all boards meetings have addressed a specific issue that needed to be, need some attention almost immediately, but I don't think we've had the department go-
We used to years ago, but they were several hours long, and it gave each board an opportunity to speak, so they tended to be not focused and ended up going a little bit-
Well, you could structure them, you could say, alright, we're gonna do three departments this week, three departments next week, it doesn't necessarily have to be an all-
We did change it to that, we did, every month, I think, and actually, on every agenda, there is a spot for invited boards or committees, but don't always get the, get the attendance either, so, you know, and we understand that they're not getting paid very well, if at all, but-
Yeah, they want, you know, I think sometimes it's giving the boards and committees an opportunity to talk.
Yeah.
You know, once again, you learn more about-
And then you learn what they're thinking.
Yeah, what their issues, and, alright, how can I help you, do that kind of thing, or what can the board do to make your job easier, and like I said, that comes back to the open door policy that I've always had, you know, in Carlisle, I, I used to have my DBW guy come in every single day, come in and see me, and it wasn't because I was asking him to come in every day, but he stopped by in the beginning just to find out what's going, he lets me know what's going on, this is what we're doing today, and it's like, well, it's helpful, and we developed a personal friendship as a result of that, but, you know, you know, it's, but that's open to anybody, you know, I had in Millbury with the fire chief and the police chief, you know, they both would come in regularly, I had selectmen that would come in, you know, an afternoon for an hour or two, just find out what's going on, what I'm working on, and that kind of thing, so.
Good.
Personal performance evaluations, your philosophy of thinking on objective, goals and objectives, and objective performance reviews?
Well, like I said, you know, if you're establishing a set of parameters in terms of goals and objectives, then that should be the basis of the review, although there are other components to it that, you know, that, you know, communication, you know, which is exclusive of a goal or objective, you know, keeping the board informed, I've always been a big advocate of that, and it's why, in a lot of the communities that I work, I was as successful as I was in terms of being able to, you know, stay employed, you know, I always recognized that the board was my boss, and that, you know, it was my job to make sure that things got done, and my, you're the policymakers, I'm not the policymaker, I'm a person who's gonna be here, you're gonna say, Dave, what do you think about this, or come back next week with some recommendations, I'll come back with recommendations, I will make my recommendations, but ultimately, the decision comes back to the board or selectmen, and once you make that decision, and the policy is set, it really doesn't matter what I think about it, it's, my job is then to carry out that policy on behalf of the board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking time to research us and-
Yeah, like I said, I, you know, I just tried to put all my thoughts together, and, you know, like, it's going through all the documents and giving a better sense of the community, and the financials and all that, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we're 25 minutes ahead.
25 minutes ahead, that's okay.
It's all right.
It's a good thing.
Good. So, uh, from what you heard tonight, you think that there's enough information given or information shared that we could vote to at least, um, to select in, uh, any one of these three individuals? Do you think we could make an offer to one of them?
I think the candidates that have been put forward that we interviewed, that there is one out of them, there is one that we could appoint with compet-, with confidence, I think. And there's probably two, there's three. I mean, I think they were all qualified and they all had a skill set that would benefit. So, I don't think that we would need to reopen. I don't think that we would need to repost. I think that the candidates before us are, um, are good.
Okay. I would entertain a motion that, uh, we, we deliberate on the three candidates and, uh, vote to pursue negotiations with the candidate we select.
Are we?
Deliberating first?
Okay. But we're not voting for one this evening?
We're not voting for one this evening, nope.
Okay, cause that's what was said earlier, I just want to make sure.
We're gonna post for, uh, Tuesday or Wednesday.
So, I need to hear a motion to do that.
To post or to deliberate?
To deliberate?
To deliberate and post?
Yeah, all right.
Well, we talked about posting already.
Yeah.
So, move?
Second.
Aye.
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 I would entertain, Roland, entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to my, uh, Mass General Law so that we could, uh-
Yep.
-conduct our strategy session and negotiation strategy and review the document.
Okay. Um, yep, I'll vote to go into executive session, Mass General Law, Section 30A, subsection 21, Part 2, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel.
A second.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Um-
Only to return back to regular, uh, I would like to add that to my motion, to return back to regular, um, meeting, only to adjourn.
Join this meeting.
A second.